Alright, alright. Good evening and good night, and welcome to It's Your Perspective Talk Show. It is Thursday, June 14th, 2018. My name is David, AKA Kimba, AKA Christian. Alongside Bingi Soup, but Soup is on special assignment tonight. He'll be back here next week for sure. Just to let you know, we have a telephone number, 340-201-9005. You can also text us on that number as well. Quick shout out to our sponsors, Maggie's Party Decor and Supersonic Computer Services. Thanks for supporting us over the years. We're at Facebook Live. Go to It's Your Perspective Talk Show Facebook page. You'll be able to see the live stream there. I've also shared the stream to my personal Facebook page, which is David Christian. Go on there and take a look. We do have a special guest in the studio. Gonna give a quick shout out to CHS Class of 1982. That's the year that Soup and I are representing. Big up to that whole crew there. Hope everybody's doing well and having fun. So on that note, as we roll ahead, we do have a special guest in the studio. Let me click, click, click here. And there she is. Wave to the crowd. What's happening? We have Emmanuela Perez-Cassius. Did I get that correct?
You've got it.
Alright, man. She's in the studio tonight with us. Thanks for coming back again. You've been here a couple times before.
Yes.
And you're here again for a different cause. So how you been?
I am wonderful.
You doing good?
Yes, yes. I love what you've done with the place.
Yeah, thank you.
We've all evolved.
Yes, we're working hard to keep growth circulated and moving forward and moving up, you know?
Yes, yes. The number one constant is change.
That's right, man. So, welcome back.
Yes, happy to be here. This is my boy, of course. Love you.
I talked to him today. He sends his love, man.
Yes, yes.
So this time now, you're running for the Board, the Virgin Islands Board of Education. I guess this is the St. Croix...
The St. Croix.
The St. Croix District. And so you're running for that. And so Soup and I were talking today, and we were like, well, why isn't she running for Senator, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I know. Everyone can't have the same position. For me, I identify with education. I'm a passion behind of education. So that is where I believe I can do the work. That is where I want to do the work. And those are two very important qualities when you're running for a position. That you have the ability to do the work, and you most importantly, want to do the work.
Okay.
Yes.
So one of the things I asked you, and I know you've been here before, but I wasn't sure if you were a teacher or not, and you said that you were.
Right. I used to work in education before. And then when I returned back home, I went into nonprofit work. So right now, I am the Unit Director for the Fredericksted Caribbean Center for Boys and Girls, Virgin Islands. Formerly known as the Boys and Girls Club.
So you were a teacher not here, but in the States?
No, I was a program manager in the States. That was also what I did. I was the Character and Leadership Director for the Boys and Girls Club nationally in Atlanta.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I worked within education. I was a special ed paraprofessional here on the island before I got my degree.
Okay, alright, perfect, man. So when did it come to you that you wanted to run for the Board of Education? I mean, I like to ask all the candidates, what inspired you? Where were you at?
Well, you know, for years, I knew I had to stand in someplace. I just didn't know where I wanted to stand to help make those policies and changes. And I want to believe it was March or February, I took a group to the court to be able to witness this trial that was happening between the Department of Education and the Board of Education. And the Board of Education was taking the department to court because they wanted to incorporate Virgin Islands education history from kindergarten all the way through. And they interpreted the law as saying that. And when they got there, the judge at the time said, that's not the interpretation. The interpretation is, we're going to teach it within kindergarten to 12th grade. And at that moment, the bell went off, right? Like, so I was like, so we're fighting this battle for all of these years because of something that is interpreted differently? Like where we could have took that same energy and those same resources into going into the Senate and asking and trying to put together a legislation that can get passed by all of these different legislations that have come through during the battle to make the difference. And at that moment, I was like, why? One of the kids said, Ms. Bella, how come you don't run? The kids at the club call me Ms. Bella. Right? Because when I got there, there was already a Perez there working. So my name is Ms. Bella at the club. And I was like, Ms. Bella, how come you don't run for something? Like, how come you don't run for Senate? And I was like, mm, that ain't my thing. They were like, well, you should at least be on the Board of Education because they didn't know. So I was like, you know something? You're right. You're right. Like, these changes can keep being a discussion, and we have the abilities to get in there and make the change. So I decided to step up and put my hand in the hat and, number three on your ballot!
Okay. So are there open seats? Or this is every four-year process, right?
No, I think it's every two years. And the rotation, though. So you sit in there for a period, but every two years, somebody's position is up on the board. Two people's position is up.
This time?
Right. So there's two people up this time. And so I am, they are still running. They're campaigning for their seats. And I am campaigning against them. And hopefully, at the end of August, I will be in the general election and...
Kind of on your way.
On my way. On my way to the seat that I can bring a voice to. I can bring the voice of my children. I can bring the voice of my community because I'm still very much connected. And I can bring my voice of my fellow educators.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit more about education specifically. And we all know we need it. We all know that. We hope that, you know, our children get taught, you know, the facts of history and math and spelling and reading and all this stuff. But for you, I mean, how are you hoping to affect change if you get in?
So, my slogan is transforming education with a global vision. My education, I am a born and raised Virgin Islander. I went from being a dolphin to a Simba to a Caribbean to a Buck. Right? Like, born and raised in this educational system. And this educational system prepared me for who I am today. This education system is the same system that helped me to build confidence, lift me up, teach me, educate me, and give me opportunities to grow. That was then. This system now needs to do the same for our generations today. And so part of my platform is being able to help transform the great education system because I do not down our education system. I'd tell her, I have went many places, and every place I could stand in the arena, proud and strong of where I come from because of the education that I received here. I just think it's time now for us to start to develop it with a global intent. Because that's where the world is going. The world is becoming global citizens. This national citizenship, if you look at what's happening with money, if you look at what's happening in the government across the world, it's starting to blend. And so I would love my children to have the opportunity to blend. We have to start incorporating and thinking about STEM on a level more than just, let's do science experiments once a year for science fair. No. Our children need to eat, breed, and live this. By now, we should have coding as part of our curriculum. By now, we should have these type of...
That's a big thing.
That's the future, right? So in the 70s and 80s, they prepared me for 2000. That's the future for them at that point. I'm ready to prepare our next generation for 2026, 2028, where the world will be more technically savage. I don't care how many people want to hold on. It's moving forward. And we've got to prepare our children for this.
So let me ask you, so you went to school here. I went to Central High, and actually, I went to Pearl B. And then I went to St. Mary's. And then I did ninth grade at St. Joseph. Then I switched to Central. Because back in them days, they had double session. And I wanted to work. So I went to school in the morning, got off at 12:30. I was able to just go, I can't remember, but I did work. So that was sort of what I was distilled with from early on. But, so I'm a product of it too. But do you think that the whole concept of the education then was better than it is now?
No, it's not a better or worse thing. It was what you were preparing for. It was suiting the goal. The goal is education, to prepare the next generation of leaders to take over. The next generation of people to be able to be functional citizens within this society. And we still have this set up for the society of 1990.
Yeah, I got you.
You understand, like, this is not a good or bad. This has evolved. And part of evolution changes roles. And so my role now in my community is to help to create policy based on my experience, based on my love, based on my passion, and of course, based on my vision of where I see us going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're in favor of, like, technical, like, oh, not technical, but vocational type training?
Absolutely.
And, like, I guess...
But in a modern way, right? Like, our mechanics classes should now be teaching programming because all of our cars are aligned with everything.
Yeah, they're basically computers, yeah.
So how can I fix a car if I still only learning how to change the oil? In a little while, these cars, you're gonna have to be able to get into the oil pan through a program, right? Like, so we should start on this path from now. I believe in all of these things vocational because they're not gonna go away. We're always going to have things that support us. But we have to start training them for that. Robotics is a natural part of certain education systems in certain states. And I mean, like, on a fun level. When I was at the Boys and Girls Club, we used to go to these robotic tournaments where these kids designed this. The robots have to stand on two legs, stand on one leg, fight each other, and the kids are so engaged.
Excited about that.
And this was hands-on, right? That's the type of educational system I see us transforming into. That's the direction we need to go.
So when you get in, you'll be able to make these things happen? I mean, with you and...
One hand can clap, David. Do you hear any sounds? There is no one hand clapping.
There are sounds. Your hand hitting the wind there. But, I mean, will you be able to? I mean, or you and the others be able to sort of, because I'm hoping that everybody else is sort of thinking like you are. But, I mean, will we be able to get these things done? Because as we were saying before, 10 years I've been back, and none of the things are happening. Everybody's kind of saying, you know, but nothing's really happening. So will you guys be able to get it done this year?
I've been paying very close attention to my candidates. And I charge and challenge every Virgin Islander to pay very close attention to somebody that is speaking the language that you are interested in. It's not even about what's good or what's bad. I'm done with that. This is about aligning yourself with people who can make this same move. Because like I said, one hand can clap. So my intention is to build bridges, not walls. I am building a bridge between the Board of Education and the Department of Education. How can I support you? The language has to change. The relationships have to change. And I am a relationship person. I believe in the honey over the line.
So when you say the relationship, so is it fair to assume that there's some, I don't know, some rocky roadish kind of stuff going on between the Board of Education?
I don't know exactly what the relationship is that they have, but from what I'm seeing, it's very stagnant in production, right? So whatever it is, the relationship is on a personal level, and whatever it is, everybody's personal ideologies are, it's irrelevant.
So that's what we have to get over?
It's irrelevant, exactly.
That's what we have to get over.
I am about the whole. And that's the language I'm looking for. When I listen to people speak, I'm listening to those who are talking about the whole impact. How can we hit the masses? We're not going for 20% anymore. 80 versus 20, every time. And if my alignment, or my disposition, or my belief system has to be realigned and prioritized in order to get things done, I'm willing to do that. I do not have a hang up on any one of my goals or dreams or aspirations or visions because it's not mine. It's the walk of ours. And so the things, to me, the whole backhoe society is the I, right? Like, that was my idea. I hear so much of this in meetings and in discussions that, like, this is so irrelevant. Like, how are we gonna get it passed? And part of my bridge work is also going into the legislature and the executive. I am having conversations with people, having discussions, and listening to yours, and you listen to mine. And then we come up with a priority that can best suit the whole, right? Because my vision is my vision, but it's not mine to deliver alone, right? We all have the delivery. And thirdly, on my platform, is engagement. I am so distraught by the marginalization that our parents have in the education system where everybody tells you what's good for you. What's good for your children. I think we've done it so much that the parents don't even think I need to be a part anymore. And so this is why we have these meetings without nobody coming out to hear, nobody coming out. But I ask you what you think, right? And I give you a voice and an opportunity to be able to be there, especially our students.
Well, how can we fix that? And I guess you're talking about PTA meetings.
I'm talking, okay, so you know there's PTSA? Don't forget my S's. Don't forget the students because they are number one clients. As much as we like to...
So there's PTA and there's PTSA?
No, it's PTSA. Like, it's transformed, right? There was a time when there was Parent Teacher Association, and then somebody had a genius idea and said, we should really start to incorporate the voices of the people who we serve. I think we can betterly serve them if we know what they want or need.
Okay, so the Parent Teacher Student Association. I got you.
Absolutely. And so in that realm, it's not active and have full participation and buy-in, one, because of lack of knowledge, two, because nobody's actually listening to, it's too hypothetical. That's what it is. As a former educator, I used to sit PTA meetings sometimes. I'd be like, right? Like, if I hear about one more of these things that's coming down from the top, but nobody's actually funding it, nobody's actually supporting it, and then we don't even actually pay enough attention to the data to see how effective it is. That has to end. We're moving forward.
Uh-oh, hold on, hold on. We got a call here. Hold on here. It's Your Perspective Talk Show.
Hi, good afternoon. How are you doing?
Great, how are you?
I'm doing great, Frank. Yeah.
Uh-huh. You have a question for our guest?
Of course. I got a question from Estacio. I was wondering, why exactly is the Board of Education responsible for, if I remember correctly, it was also to bring certain activities, which sometimes is certified, which just seems to be dragged along a long, long decade. What is your plan to implement the certification process along that?
The certification process is what you're asking me about?
Exactly.
Yes, yes. Listen, that is my fourth leg on my platform table, is the certification process. Our certification process right now calls for accountability of us as professionals, right? Every profession in the whole world has to have some sort of accountability. And that's what they call for. Now, the streamlining process, or the long-winded process in which it takes right now, is definitely something I want to review firsthand. I've been trying to pinpoint it from being outside here. Where is it exactly where we drop the ball? Or where is it where the frustration becomes to rise? Teachers express the frustration comes in the longevity of the whole process. Like, we pay for things upfront in regards to being certified, and it doesn't come through for six months, or never enough. Like, there's no alternative ways for me to become certified. When in the world, there's so many different ways to be educated, and we keep telling you, there's only one way. If you go to accredited university and put yourself more in debt. So I am going to look into that, and I'm going to address the concerns of my fellow colleagues because I am an educator. I had forever. So my fellow colleagues will definitely be, their concerns of the longevity, the concerns of the bills that you have to pay in order to get it done. And then, when do you reach to your mark when there's always a new policy being implemented? So from the inside, I'm gonna have an opportunity to be able to really analyze it. Because from the outside, I'm not getting any answers. I'm just like the rest of you out here in the community, trying to figure out, like, why? Why is it taking so long? But I don't know the inside because I've tried to go to meetings since I've decided to do this.
Have you met with anybody?
Have they met with anybody? I mean, I haven't been able to attend one board meeting yet. Even though they say it's a public invite, and you could go, I've never seen one on the table yet that's public, and I've asked.
Oh, really? So you said they're having these meetings, but they're private?
So, right. So it's like, we're having a closed meeting today, or it's a closed meeting today. So I haven't been able to get inside. But like many of you, I share the same concern of, why? Like, why is this taking so long? Who do we have to go to? Is this like to China and back, like the Nopa process? You know, like, is it one of those things that we just don't understand, but there's a reason?
So these things are advertised as public meetings, but you...
All board meetings are public. This is, yeah. So Board of Elections is, Board of Education is, but it has to be an open meeting, right? Like, so there's a difference between an open and a closed meeting. And I guess closed meetings are more where they talk about internal affairs, and public meetings are where they're discussing outside.
Outside affairs, okay, okay. So and I think the caller, he dropped off, but the caller's other question was, you know, like, what does the board do? I mean, like, what is their primary responsibility? And I asked that, and he asked that. And then I was talking to someone else the other day about, and I'm probably gonna get a lot of flack for this, and you might even be flack for this, but the person asked me, is the Board of Education even really needed? I mean, couldn't the Department of Education function without the Board of Education?
Okay, so the Board of Education was put as like a liaison between the legislature and the department, right? So it's kind of...
Okay, hold on a second here. Hold on a second here. It's Your Perspective Talk Show.
Hi, how you doing? I was just, um...
Yes.
I just connected.
Yes.
I agree with Mr. Cassius about the meetings. The people I'm supposed to be with, but they don't inform the public about the meetings. It's like a closed door. So I find, I find that some of the members in the Board of Education can spend more time on top of Mariota to actually talk about this, what could happen, and sort of cover up for procedures, allowing registration, for what they have done there, and forcing them out, you know? The third party game, or education, practically none exists. I can't think of all those things in the schools, and stuff, and the other, the other. So, Miss Cass, I'm really hoping, I'm trying to vote for you.
Thank you.
What you're saying to the position, that you actually, to the back of that, that pool, or not, that kind of, you actually try and typically, to respect, implement, and help education, help the kids. And, you know, those that are on the field, and top of Mariota, too, was taking to each other. You will be part of the person governing the issue, not the person trying to create a seat, you know, what is your job.
Absolutely.
Help and communicate, and find funding, both for these very healthy bodies, funding for these projects, not just be somebody to sit up and run the motor, 24/7, and drive up a path to, for the sense of stage work. And do not do what you think is good.
Well, I thank you first of all for supporting me. I really appreciate that, putting some confidence inside of me. And when it comes to my work, work is something that I shared with David earlier. I'm an Indian. You know, I'm a person that enjoys actually moving my feet and getting it done. So you don't have to worry about the talk shows and all of the unproductive mallet truths that'll happen throughout the island. For me, that's unproductive, and I can't even sell phantom waste in my time on top of that. It's not for me. So again, I appreciate your vote of confidence. And look, if at the end of four years, my work is not up to the part that I am speaking with you with, I, Emmanuela Perez-Cassius, will step out of the position. Because if I can't be impactful, I don't need to be there. I will make space for the person who can make that change. I am not, like I said earlier, I'm not caught up on my vision and my, it's not mine, it's ours. And the first, first thing, I'm brought out, I'm happy that you called in because the first, first thing is getting our community back engaged in the education process. Back engaged in the day-to-day decisions that's making their children life, forming their children. Because they spend more time in school and out of school, you know? I tell people all the time, the impact, you really want to see when somebody's developed, is inside that classroom. And so we have to make it something that the teachers love being there. We have to make it something that the department understands that you are supported by the board. This is a way for me and you to come together and help create a policy, not disconnection, not the board saying one thing, and the VI Code saying something else, and then the legislature don't even know what happened in. Like, I know the, right? That's really important to me. So bringing an active voice and your voice back to the table is important to me.
Okay. Caller, you have another comment, a question for our guest?
I'm really happy about the job, doing it on my Boys and Girls Club in Princeton. Did a great job getting the basketball court, and, or contributing to the, um, you made a big difference.
Thank you, thank you. I would be sitting down here being false, though, if that was all me. We gotta give it up to the brothers and sisters that helped support it, especially Mr. Christmas. Rakim Christmas came out and did what I was talking about, be an Indian, put his money where his mouth is. And those are the people who show me, like, Emmanuela is important. The walk is important. It's not easy, but it's important work. And so I'm ready to get important work done on behalf of the Board of Education.
Alright, the longer you put in the need to talk behind, and you act, I move in for you.
Well, the action ain't front. The talk is what's behind. So, all I could tell you right now is keep up, because the things is happening, and we are moving.
Keep up? Are you running away?
Yes, side by side, side by side, brother, side by side.
I was saying to other people before, when I see them in the street, and I tell them, I'm going to tell, I'm gonna tell you about yourself too.
And I appreciate that because keeping me accountable is important. I believe in accountability.
Yeah, that's an important thing.
As much as we don't like to word it as telling you by yourself, all it is, is you keeping me accountable to the words that I said I was going to do, and me keeping you informed. So that's just a great discussion, and that's more progress. When these things happen, that's progress. That's what I call it.
Alright, thank you very much. That's all I have to ask you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, man. Thanks for calling. Appreciate that.
Alright, bye.
Alright.
Right there. Make sure it's dropped up. Okay, so thanks for that caller calling in there. He's definitely giving you his vote of confidence that you're gonna go in there.
And I appreciate that. And that's what I'm asking for the whole District of St. Croix, especially my Democratic brothers and sisters during the primary. The first step is with you. Like, I can't go to the second step unless I step out first with my brothers and sisters behind me. I have been a Democrat from the time I registered to vote. And I was an active Democrat when I was 18 years old. And then I fall out because politics ain't an easy sport, you know? And sometimes when you're in your twenties and you're trying to be all ideology and optimistic, when you hang around too much things that'll make it feel like it's toxic and draining. And so I stepped out, but I regained, rebuilt, and ready to go.
And you're ready to go. I got you, man. So let's talk again about the, I guess, the responsibilities of the board. And I think you were sort of starting on that, and then you kind of called back in. But what are the responsibilities of the board?
So, beside being a liaison, like being that connection, we're also the representatives that go and check up on schools and make sure that teachers are certified, and make sure that policies are being implemented from the law aspect. Now, the Department of Education is who does the actual programming, right? The actual curriculum.
The teaching.
Not just the teaching, but the creation of the curriculum. This is why I say it's important for us to be a support for them, right? Like, it's important for us to know exactly what the curriculum is that we are implementing to our students, and figure out ways to support them from the outside. We can't fight against it. That's their job. That's their title. We have to respect their role in the department. If you want to be somebody in the department, go into the department. But you can't sit from the outside and tell them how to do their jobs. Or worse, try to bully them into, based on your title, right? If you really want to make change, go to the legislature because that's where laws are. That's what implements the direct department's curriculum. Or, but focus right here on what we could do to make sure that every person, and I mean every, right now, certification is something that they call on for administration and teachers and counselors. I believe everybody should be sanctified inside of the Department of Education.
So what exactly is the issue with the certification? It takes a long, cumbersome process?
Long. I don't even know if it's cumbersome because I know people, I know people by name that has done everything to the T that the Board of Education asked for, and still don't have their certification in their hand. Because how often is it brought to the table where we review it? How many reviews are actually being addressed and implemented in a timely manner? These are the things that I feel is holding up the process. I don't think that the process is being held up by the teacher's ability to become certified. I think a lot of it is being held up by the board's ability to certify them, the actual process of stamping that paper and passing it.
So they've already taken the test, and they're...
Taken tests, been to college, been turned in credits after credits after credits. Like, I've been this walk. I walked this walk. So I know firsthand. And I have a son right now that graduated from UVI. Now, he's his full year out. Turned in all of his paperwork, have everything. And my son is still waiting for his certification. Left, went to North Carolina. I got certified in North Carolina.
Oh, really? Okay, okay.
So my initial was I wanted to educate my children, right? The same community I come out from. The process frustrated me so much that I went someplace else that did it in two weeks.
Okay, yeah.
What was, what's the difference?
So you took the test, you got 100.
Proxy.
Two weeks later, you got a certificate saying you're certified. Go teach.
Go teach. Which district will you like to be in? Apply for all of them, and let's see who calls you.
Okay, okay.
But here, it's, we have teachers that are teaching that are not certified, so that means you're not being paid on a certain scale, right? Like, so we're affecting the whole domino effect when you've already done your due diligence. And or we have teachers that want to return back to the district, teaching someplace else for a long time. And because they don't have one aspect of it, we holding them up. But you know they could teach. Like, you understand that, rather, we're just gonna pull you in and pull you in the student pool and the substitute pool and all of these pools that, again, frustrate me as a professional.
You're a professional, yeah. Yeah, I vaguely remember hearing something about, but I wasn't quite clear until you just said, explained it to me. So I'm kind of shocked to know that this is going on, especially when we have a teacher shortage. And I hear about them talking about teacher shortages all, just the other day, I heard some talk show, and the Filipino teachers. And I'm like, well, wait a minute. I thought that was all done. You know, we got people that are graduating from college that are, so I guess it all makes sense now.
It's, so rather than being the catapult, we're kind of like the concrete. Right? Like, sometimes you jump straight out to high school, and it's like, boom, I hit the ground, versus, boing, I'm into the classroom, right? Like, we've got to pay attention to those things.
So you have a remedy to fix that whole process?
No, I have to analyze that whole process. And being able to analyze, it takes me being in that seat, right? Because from this direction, I am just like you. I'm putting in the paperwork and trying to figure out what's happening behind the glass, right?
I got you. So you have to get on the other side of glass now and see what happens.
Absolutely. And bring the message back, right? Right? Like, the clear message has to come back. So is it a policy thing why we hold up? Is it a law thing? Like, is there something on the books that's saying, which I haven't found?
Yes.
If I get in there, maybe there's something I missed.
Yeah, I got you.
So in that seat, I'm gonna have a different viewpoint.
Okay.
Right? And so from that viewpoint, I hope to make changes.
Okay.
I hope to make partnerships. I hope to build bridges that connect all of these entities together and uplift our children.
Okay, perfect, man. Um, interesting, I didn't realize that was really happening there.
Yeah.
I don't know why, especially in, I guess, I don't know if if, I guess in the States, you said your son went to North Carolina.
That was North Carolina.
So I guess in in my mind, I guess you could do all that stuff from home in your pajamas, do it, you know, do the certification.
Sort of, sort of, because I don't, I don't think.
You get a certificate saying, hey, you're ready.
Right.
You know, but here, you're saying it's just a six, seven, eight month process.
And even after he's certified, there's still processes in place that he has to go through. Like, at the end of his first year, he had to get an evaluation to take back to the certification to show, well, he had a very effective first year, he was able to accomplish this. Like, it's not, here you go.
Yeah.
Godspeed, see you in forty.
Okay.
Or or here where I think recertification is every ten years, right? And then, because the the law has shifted now.
Okay.
So when I get back up there.
Yeah.
I just, that's the next time I see you again is in ten years? I could have went and now failed the last ten years, I've been the worst, most toxic teacher ever, but you weren't supported, and we put all of that pressure on the department. Who already has to take care of the bill and take care of the schools, pay the teachers, that that's where our support comes in, that's why I believe the board's support coming. We should be doing training, we should be doing follows, we should be trying to put things in place to help support what we already have.
Okay.
Which is our educators, like, which is our teachers.
Now, we, a couple, a couple of the um, aspirants that we spoke to here, and if I if I remember correctly, and I know the gentleman that was all asking, he said this too, I just, we we talked a little bit about it during the show, and then he left and I was like, still thinking about it, but he was saying that if, and if I'm not correctly saying that there is no curriculum?
No curriculum for what?
For the Department of Education and I could, so so let me, let me, so let me ask you, so we do have a curriculum?
We have curriculums, different curriculums for different subject matters.
Okay.
Now, if if they're all being implemented fully.
Maybe maybe that's what it was.
That's what they mean, right?
Okay, so what do you mean by not implemented fully?
So we create our utopia. When you create a curriculum, it's like you creating your ideal.
Okay.
Your ideal has to be funded, your ideal has to be supported by by different entities.
Yeah.
And the sad, that's one of the downfalls of every time a new governor, a new commissioner, your beautiful curriculum that we loved is now put on a shelf.
But what does that have to do with the governor, though?
No, it has to do, the governor picks the commissioner. The commissioner is in charge of the department and the direction. So your curriculum might emphasize, let's say, program-based learning, right? You have a curriculum that you have created for the social studies department where they are learning program-based. That means they're going out into their community and they're experiencing it and then they're learning about it. That was a great curriculum, but it's not going to be used because I think David's curriculum is better. And David's curriculum fits within our ideal for the money that we have.
Okay.
So we're putting the curriculum to support the budget
Okay.
versus gaining a budget to support the curriculum.
Okay.
And that's where the lobbying comes in, that's where where our senators come in, and that's why it's so important to be able to speak and have senators that really believe that education is more than just a hard string.
Okay.
It's not those youth, we love them, they're our futures. And when it's time to allot funding or build your budget, the lowest department is Department of Education. The biggest cuts are the Department of Education, like.
Yeah.
It doesn't go.
So we have a curriculum and the curriculum potentially could change every four years.
Potentially.
Um.
Or we could adopt new ones, or we could, we could research and implement, but part of the problem when I was in the department that I found in thirteen years, every time you just gain your feet wet with this new curriculum, like, I just gained how to educate my people with this curriculum, new curriculum.
Okay.
I I didn't even get to see the data of the impact. And we we don't, we're not utilizing things like, and we we collect data, don't think we don't collect it. We've got the data.
Okay.
But we're not utilizing it effectively enough in my eyes. We're not, we're not giving it enough time to really manifest itself. My my friend Summer, that's my girl, Summer said, Emanuela, idea is like having a baby, right? Like, so initially for nine months, it's yours. You walk around with this baby, you take care of this baby, this baby is all yours, you know, that kind of way? Like, it lives based on how much energy you're giving it.
Yeah.
It's as healthy as you make this baby, but then you give birth to this baby. And I think that we don't cut off the baby at two.
Okay.
Right? Like, so we develop it, we train everybody in it, we we train them till it can't be trained anymore, we send them off, we bring them back, we we buy all of the documents and we buy all of the the um, technology to support it. And then after we run it for two years, somebody else come in with a new thing and it's like.
Okay.
There goes the baby straight to Queen Louise. Like, we're no longer taking care of this baby as a thing. I think we need to spend more time actually utilizing the resources that we have in a full capacity.
So do you like the curriculum that they have now?
So I'm not in the classroom.
Okay.
So I'm not firsthand exactly on the curriculum that they have, but the curriculum hasn't, the books and stuff that they're using hasn't changed too much, but I do love the fact that my daughter in third grade came home, because this is her first year in third grade.
Okay.
Coming down with a book that has V I history inside of it. This is a half limit, like, this is a real workbook, this isn't like
Okay.
we run off copies.
Okay, so they, so they are doing that?
Right, so they have geography with references to our islands. They have, you know, Marty learned about the size of the island, and she learned about our geographic location on the globe
Okay.
and our longitude and our latitude lines, all still referencing back to our island. So I see that they're making progress in this.
Okay.
I hope to see it for the next ten years.
So are they, are they starting at a third grade as opposed to maybe first grade, maybe? I don't know.
So she's not learning V I history.
Okay.
That's not V I history. I mean, she's learning V I history in like, off curriculum, V I history, like, where your teachers in, you know, they have a project, you learn about it.
Okay.
But this is an actual textbook.
Okay.
And when you read some of the assignments in the textbook, there's reference to Caribbean things.
Okay.
There's reference to our weather patterns, there's reference to our geographic locations. And to me, that was powerful.
Okay.
Right? Because that wasn't always there.
Okay.
At, when I was there, I I didn't see it.
Yeah, we didn't have that either.
So that's, that's a powerful move.
Okay.
But those moves have to be made in other arenas.
Okay.
One, and for longevity.
Yeah.
We we have to say, this works.
Okay.
So I don't care who come in, we keeping it, and there have to be some sort of policy to support that, because if our laws and our policies don't have it, it makes it interpretable every time.
But I I I don't know, I don't know, maybe I'm a little slow here, but why does the policy, why does policy have to be so involved with educating, getting it at public education?
Because it has to have a guideline, we have to have a line in the sand.
But isn't, but but isn't that line, in my opinion, in my thought, isn't that line being set by the Commissioner of Education about?
You mean the commissioner that changes every four years?
Well, yeah, she she changed, the person changes, but you would think that there would still be some cohesiveness.
No, that's, that's ideal, that's why the policy is important, because the cohesiveness have to stay. If it's something that works.
And the cohesiveness is being controlled by the policy.
The, no, the policy is not there to mandate you staying cohesive.
Okay.
So we're humans, and and humans do human things.
Okay.
But if there's a law or there's a policy in place, you understand that you're violating a systematic problem. And and that's, that's very important for growth. I used to, my bubble days, you know, I used to be like, the system is against us.
Yeah.
Now I feel empowered to be able to change.
To change the system.
Affect that same system that I feel is against us, because in a lot of ways, some of these systematic policies are against us.
Yeah.
And that's why, that's exactly why
Yeah.
policy is in education, policy should be in everything. It took me years to get this.
Okay.
It should.
Okay.
I mean, from my opinion, that's Emanuela's opinion.
Yeah, I I don't know, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just like.
It's a system, the government is a system. Policy doesn't have to be in your personal life. Policy doesn't have to be in my nonprofit ideal life. But and even there's policy there, but it it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
But policy has to be a part of a system and the government is a system. If it's always left to perspective and you thinking every person coming in have the good heart and the good intention, we will always be in these positions where we're like, I can't believe we were just in best, I can't believe there was just. Because you gave me that wiggle room. How many times we don't see things that come up as morally wrong, but nobody's fined, nobody's judged, nobody's sent to court? How many times?
Yeah.
We just saw this.
Yes.
Like.
Yes.
So because there wasn't any policy in place, I get to willy-nilly stand up and say, I don't think it was wrong. I I don't feel like anybody should be punished or justified.
Okay, so that's hence why, I got you.
Exactly.
I it it's kind of making sense, but then again, you know, it's like.
Your personal side go conflicted, right? Like, about bonding the system side.
Yeah.
But your logical side of understanding that this is a system, so you could either be a part of it or against it, but you can't be.
Well, maybe, maybe the system has got too many, too many layers or something.
But that's the system.
You know, too many layers, and that, and that potentially ultimately is is a direct reflection on what ending, actually ends up in the classroom. The teacher and the low morale and and and, you know, the students, on and on and on and on.
People say, you know, when I was in education, we talk about, oh, I love when this person was a superintendent. Oh, you remember, and that this person is a superintendent, we used to be able to ta 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 ta. That was a willy-nilly, but if that person's style was effective, where we were growing and we was making progress and our children was, why we didn't keep it? Because it's not a policy.
Yeah.
It's not a law. And and that's really my whole purpose of this run. My whole purpose of my candidacy is to help my people to understand that systems is ours. We create them, they run based on us, and when we put things in place and we put in writing, it is now the systematic way to do it.
To do things. Okay. I I'm learning a little bit here, I just, I just sort of have as a kind of a simple, simple, I don't want to say simple-minded, but just try trying to make things simple.
David, I'm with you. We talked about the right brain, light brain, we talked about it, we're right-brained people, that's why. And that's why it take me forty-two years to decide
Yeah.
this is where I I need to be. I went through so many different growth patterns and I'm going to continue to grow.
I understand.
But when I came to the understanding of the policy, I told you in that courtroom that day.
Yeah.
Ding 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 ding, we just utilize resources to have a court tell us what we could have sat down to a table and understood.
Can you talk about that? Is that something that you can share?
Well, I could only talk about it from the limit that I know, I wasn't in the process, I wasn't a defendant on the case. I I didn't even follow the case.
So you just came to court just to observe?
My children at the club.
Okay.
My duty is to expose them to our society.
Okay.
And part of our society is the judicial process.
Yes.
When I heard Ms. Morehead on the radio talking about the going back to court.
Yes.
I said this would be a great time for them to see direct impact.
Okay.
Right? Because this, this is, if that had passed, if that judge had stood up and said, the Department of Education ran next school year, everybody might have had a Virgin Islands history curriculum from kindergarten through twelfth grade in place.
Okay.
That didn't happen.
Okay.
Because your interpretation, right?
Okay.
We have to fix that.
Okay.
Who fixes those laws? The legislature.
Okay.
We wasn't supposed to use our resources to go to the judicial branch. We were supposed to use our resources to go to the legislative branch.
Okay.
And ask them, can you put the wording in from K through twelve, not we're educating you through, in between K through twelve, and the Department of Education, V I history is in ninth grade, Caribbean history is in ninth grade, so you get it.
Yeah.
You want to stick within the system, you'll get it eventually.
Okay.
So they're not violating the law.
Okay.
But the law needs to be addressed and worded differently.
Okay.
Just three words would have made that whole process something different.
Okay.
Right?
All in interpretation.
All in interpretation, but if it's written, if the policy is written clearly, there's not much wiggle room for interpretation.
Okay.
Right? Like, if it was said that children in grades kindergarten through twelfth grade will be educated every year in Virgin Islands history, that's a whole different discussion.
Yeah.
And then if I had to take you to court because you weren't implementing it, I have a whole different backbone to stand with. That moment for me was.
Yeah.
Emanuela, they go hand in hand, like you can't.
So this was last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I do remember some talk about going to court, so this was the outcome.
This was, this was my understanding of the outcome now. I think they're still in fight and they're still pressing, saying that his interpretation is wrong or whatever, because I I haven't heard anybody go to the legislature yet to say, this is a concern. We went to court, we tried to fight it one way, we can't get a department to implement V I history from kindergarten to twelfth grade without the law saying so. The department only has to meet the mandates of the law, you know, the department does not have to meet the mandates of the people.
Yeah. Which is odd.
Which is odd, but it's fact.
Yeah.
So you want to change it?
Yeah.
Get in there and make that change.
Yeah.
Change the wording.
Yeah.
Even to the role of the board, I I hear a lot of board, current board people saying their role is too limited. They want to have more, say, with the superintendent, they want to have more jurisdiction over the department. Emanuela, for what?
Okay.
Right? Like, why? But when I get in there, I'm gonna be able to maybe understand their their vision, because these sisters and brothers been in there for a long time.
Okay.
And I don't want to undermine the work that they're doing.
Okay.
I just need a clearer understanding and the communication that they're bringing to me as a citizen is not clear.
It's not clear.
It's not clear.
So you, obviously, when you get inside on the other side of the glass, you'd be able to see more.
Yes.
Of what's happening.
And relate it back, right? Like this, this is not just the information coming to Emmanuela. We've got to get the information to the people and get the first hand people who are being affected by these things. Viewpoint.
Okay.
Everybody gets a say, everybody don't have a way. That's that's, that's what I believe. I I say it all the time at the club. Everybody have a say.
Okay.
But everybody don't have a way.
Okay.
But at least if I hear you say, and I am the person making those choices to make the way. I could keep in mind of your concerns. I know exactly what you're looking for.
Okay, okay. Let me ask you a question. So you talk about your, I guess your daughter getting VI um. Class.
Yes.
In third grade. So you 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 do you think that there should be VI history every year?
Every year.
Every year.
Every single year. I think we have limited our virgin and I get passionate about this. As a Virgin Islander, growing up in the Virgin Islands, you know who teach me a real insight to our history? Dr. Highfield and UVI.
Okay.
And when I tell you I sing in Queen Mary, cause I went to Probie Larson, so they taught me VI history. I had the clearly wrote book. Again, a limited perception. I moved on into junior high, more of David Hamilton Jackson, more of Queen Mary. More of eighteen forty three, like more of the same. But you know what I never learned? I never learned all of my Caribbean literature people, all of those dynamic people that have written masterpieces around the world.
Yeah.
That's part of VI history. That should be a part of our insight in English classes. What about the scientists and the creations that we have made locally? Our bush is science by itself.
Yeah.
Why is that not a part of our lesson in science? Why is our science experiments not a part of finding what this bush remedies are for? Mango leaves, this leaf, like there's scientific people right now that collecting sawasup leaves to heal cancer.
Yeah, yeah, in a real way.
And they grew in our backyard, like like our children are see like it's nothing.
Yeah.
But if we incorporate that, I think VI history is too limited.
Okay.
Perception of what VI history is and fire burn and and all those things is who make me prideful. All those things is who that make me stand up and be like, listen.
Yeah.
My ancestors was a different ancestor, right? But there's more to us than that.
Yeah.
We are Alexander Hamilton.
Yeah.
We are, we are like, we are the bushes and the trees that we don't grow for remedies. We are African roots that came here that we still cooking like, that we still singing like, that we still teaching our children. We are oral literacy. We are.
Okay.
I want all of that. And and I think if we start from kindergarten, by twelfth grade, you graduating with a whole well-rounded respect. Of who your people is, not just a limited fire burn, you know? Like like myself. I I that's where I graduated from, but when I went to UVI. And Dr. Highfield shared with me like the economics behind this and and what we was doing as a people and the. I was like, man.
It should be taught.
This should be.
Taught from here.
Could you imagine?
Your daughter gonna have, is she gonna have something in fourth grade or is it just third grade and maybe a few years?
Each school is different, right? Like, so my daughter gets a Probie Larson education and I am a dolphin, so I just support my dolphins all the time.
What do you, what do you mean by Probie Larson education? I thought.
All public schools should be the same, right? Well, that's the ideal.
So you're saying it's not?
Everybody, it's not that it's not, it's that the level of how it's taught. So I have to introduce everything. Every grade level knows what has to be introduced and what has to be taught.
Okay.
The level in which you teach it and the direction from which you teach it is up to you. So example.
But I thought everybody is following sort of a like a lesson plan, so whether I go to Probie Larson or, you know, A B C school.
You gonna get the same books, but you might get a teacher that does the. Do this for homework and come back tomorrow. You just got grade for it and you move on. Or you might get a teacher that turns this into a lesson, right? Like where you're like, look at the shorelines and you're going through the whole walkthrough experience. It just depends on where you're being educated.
Okay, so this is, this is more of a of a personality sort of thing when it comes to the the actual delivery of the. Of the material.
Right, right, exactly.
But what you're learning.
What you're, right.
Should be the same.
Right, but learning is something that you have, Emmanuela speaking again, that you have to feel, right? Like, learning is not something that you just heard. Learning is being able to apply it to the next step.
Okay.
Right? Being able to take the information that was given to you and apply it. You giving me page thirteen for homework and even though all that information and it's not again, I'll write. Where's the lesson? Like, where's the implementation? Where's the the direction? How can I take this information that you just gave me? And apply it to another part of my life or in the world?
Okay. Well, here here again too, I I guess I'm a little misguided because I'm thinking that I'm in third grade, so if I, if I, if I go to in third grade. At school A. And then let's say I I go to school B tomorrow.
You have the same book?
Uh, same book, but I'll sort of be get, should be getting the same sort of.
You should.
Okay, so you're saying that there's a possibility that you may not be, okay.
And so as a board of director on the board.
You're gonna see that that.
I'm going to see that, how can I help you to be able to teach this law and style, right? Like, maybe it's just training. Maybe it's just you just don't know how to teach like that, right? Because you went to a different school or you have a different viewpoint. But we're gonna take what works and try to help others to see it so that maybe they could implement it.
Okay.
Right? Like, like maybe they could adopt the same style.
Okay.
And give it to everybody, because if it's effective for one, it gonna be effective for all.
Okay.
And so we have to start looking at that. And I feel like those are things that the board could be able to do. We could take time out to actually analyze what's happening in the schools. Our job is to walk through the schools, you know, like part of our duties.
Yeah.
Is to come through the schools and we, we tend to do it to see what windows out, who need A C, who need.
Yeah.
But I want to come from a different direction. I want to be able to watch and be like, my gosh, this is so dynamic at Probie Larson. I would love to for Claro Marco schools to, to have this same thing or adopt something from Claro Marco and be like, man.
Yeah.
This would really be impactful for, because.
Across the board, yeah.
Across the board. I go to certain schools and I see that it's like, man, this school is excellent for this. This school is excellent for, I mean, like, I start naming the schools.
Yeah.
I I call this a cultural high school. You know, like this is a cultural elementary. This is a STEM elementary. This is a. If we want to go in that direction, we could look into that.
Okay.
But currently, I I see where everybody's priority is a little different.
Okay.
Right? And then so the lesson isn't necessarily given the same, or sometimes I think we're shortchanging some of our children.
Okay.
In certain areas.
Okay. Interesting. I'm 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 hearing you and I'm thinking I didn't realize, I know there's some issues and some problems and some food bars. But I just, uh, these kind of things that you're saying here, I think in my mind, these things are just automatically happening because.
That's the misconception, so this is where we have to get our community back engaged.
Yeah, because you 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 your kid's in a school, going to get an education, and it's, it's all in a sense the same. But you're saying that it's not quite the same.
It's not quite the same.
Okay.
The outcome isn't the same. I got an education where I could see, feel, touch. I use all five of my senses to discover this. You got an education where you went home, I had to just turn back in the assignment the next day and get a grade for it. So me and you there on a row, right? But I have an actual education, right? Like, I have something to go on. This is why we have people who that fight to gain to certain schools. Every, you you wanna see something? Go down to pupil personnel and see how many people ready to backflip, sum us up, move out. Just to get in the right district because I need my child to get that.
Now go where?
Like, go to pupil personnel. And in August, you know, kids start registering for schools.
Okay, okay, I got you.
I'm guilty. When my sons was leaving one school and going to the next, I was like, yeah, so we gonna tell them we moving west because I want you go complex. Right? Like, I wanted my sons to graduate as Baras. So I went and we relocated them. We relocated our whole self basically, because all of us moved.
Okay.
We could get that experience.
I got you.
But why my sons shouldn't I get to see him experiencing central?
Yeah.
Right? Like, like, why I would live in Frederickstad and drive all the way to Pearlby every day? Because I need my daughter to have that Pearlby Larson experience.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When I should be able to get this experience anywhere.
Okay.
Right? And then that's because I'm in tune, so I know what happened in each school, but I have too many parents that's not in tune.
Okay.
Right? So all this is my child coming home with a book and they got this for homework and I helping them with their homework and I sending them right back out. But you don't know what happened in the other schools because it's not. I guess it's, it's not, it's not common knowledge.
Okay.
Right? That you have the right to be able to see what's happening within your schools and. You have the right to be able to investigate and ask questions and. Power back inside my parents' hand because that's what gonna make.
Yeah.
The electorates.
Yeah.
Say, oh, somebody is being informed, so.
Yeah.
So when you hear things being passed and the legislative floor, you're not just taking it like.
Yeah.
Why is this important? Why is that?
Okay.
It's important because it's your child having an opportunity to be exposed to something different.
Okay.
Having an opportunity to tap into them. We have people failing because lack of engagement.
So how do, how do we, uh, well, before we get to that, I wanted to ask about, cause I I'm, I'm, I'm a father. I have, I have a grown son, so. My son is actually thirty four now. So, I mean, so. When he was young and in school days, I was a parent that participated, going to the school, talk to the teachers.
Right.
You know, it was always, oh, here comes, you know, here comes Jai's, you know, father. So they kinda knew me.
Yes.
But how do we get, and then I hear, I hear, you know, now that the P, the P T S A, there's not a lot of parents showing up. But how do we get more parents to go to these meetings?
And get involved?
Yeah, and get involved. I mean, how do we, how do we do that? Cause I think that helps. I mean, I I would like to think that me going to my son's school back in those days helped him.
Right.
You know?
Right. Me too. Me too. I used to tell people, the reason why I do this is because I want these people to know they follow this guy.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I want them to know that I too have a vision for them and I too have a vision of them being successful and grown and. You know, a a great citizen within our society.
Yeah.
And so I'm here to help you. Like, I'm here to help you help me make sure that my son and my daughter is.
Yeah.
At their best selves.
Yeah.
Right? And you could only do that if you're involved.
Yeah.
I think part of the buy-in, first of all, is to bring the information forward on their level, right? Like, I still hear.
There as in the parents?
As in, yes, as in the parents.
Okay.
I'm a young mom. Like, when I had my children, I was still a teenager.
Okay.
And and a lot of how I got involved was because of other people. Each one teach one. Like, I can't honestly say I read it out and decided to go and do it.
Okay.
I had other parents coming and that's one of the main ways of us getting involved. When, when I get involved, I gotta bring a friend. It's like going to a job, right? Like, I'm not walking in the dance by myself and I gonna bring somebody, but she done call her friend. I said, listen, I gonna be at this dance at this time. Like, we have to do more of that.
Okay.
Groundwork.
Okay.
More of that, just simply asking you. When I was, when I began my campaign, I read under the women's voters. The number one way to get somebody to vote for you is ask them. When I read that, right, I was like, okay, bulletin boards, flyers, all of the smoke screens in the world. When the easiest way and the number one way is to ask.
Yeah.
That is going to be part of my work.
Can I have your vote?
Can I have your vote? Can I have your support? You know what's happening inside of this school today? Come out with me. I'm going to invite you out. I'm going to try my best to always be present enough that I could have.
Okay.
Each one tell one. And then when we start doing that more and more, it catches on like anything, like anything we do.
Okay.
It becomes a catch on.
Okay.
And and part of branding our education system or rebranding our education system and part of the transformation. Is going to come from each one pulling one.
Okay.
Each one teaching one.
Okay.
Type of groundwork.
Okay.
All of the smoke screens is too distracting because we have so many people sending them up at the same time.
I got you.
Right? Like, as as productive as your, your thing is on its perspective. While I'm listening, I'm still scrolling.
Okay.
And then I come back down.
Yeah.
Then I scroll somewhere because the distractions that we we face every day, they're not going anywhere, but I gotta walk within it.
Yeah.
And walking within it is that face-to-face contact that will beat it every time.
Okay.
So that that's, that's.
Yeah, I I always think that's important and I just hear that, um, a lot of that doesn't happen here. And I I always feel bad. For the, for the student.
Yeah.
Because this is what this is for, you know, just the interaction that you have, um, all three of you, student, parent and teacher. To just sort of give an overview and a direction and, you know, help them with this and, you know, just, just, just that, that guidance.
And it's not even about the help. Like, when I hear the word help, it'll feel like I giving you something, right? Like, like, like you need.
Yeah.
But it's not help that most of our parents need. Most of our parents just need support.
Okay.
I would be an active parent if I had known.
Yeah.
I would be an active parent if somebody made it available during the time I am available. We keep doing things at our convenience, right? Like, so we're gonna hold host open house for parents to come, but the only way we're gonna get them there is if we hold the report cards hostage. And then that's how we're gonna get them to come up, because you will still want to see the. Right, so, but that's, that's not the only way. We could catch them with honey too. Like, we come on out and share with us.
Yeah.
Who you are as a person. I I love open houses, what I now in my place. I know our open house is to let us know what the school is doing. But I think we should start taking our open house opportunities to let the pa- let us know what the parent is doing.
Okay.
Right? Cause we can't support you if we don't really know you.
Yeah.
And and as much as I love your son, I don't really get to know who the parent is till they're coming down to the end of the school year.
Yeah.
From the beginning when they come in, you have those that come in on the first day and they shake your hand and you never see them again until this report card day. And you have those that's eagerly wanting to be a part. And then you have those who are just being a part for their particular child. Like, when they're there helping, the only person they helping is their particular child.
Okay.
We need to shift all of that. Right? Like, like, start having that incorporated parent a month, come on in and hang out with us. You know, like, and we do little things. We do like breakfasts together on a specific week, but I need to become part of the culture.
Yeah.
We should have a every Wednesdays breakfast with your kid day.
Yeah.
So even if I missed last Wednesday, I know next Wednesday I have an opportunity to come in and have breakfast. Like, we have to start putting things in place that's convenient to the crazy schedules. That we have to walk. When I was mommy, mommy one job, mommy second job, I still had to go to UVI. So I know firsthand how hard that is. I know how much of a challenge.
It's hard, but it can be done.
But it can be done.
Yes.
If we flex a little bit too, right? We keep trying to place everything inside of these boxes. The kids have to learn this way within this box.
Yeah.
How?
And 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 it's so important. I just, I just, I don't know, I just, it's another thing to education that I always think, I mean, hopefully the parents are involved. When, you know, the student's at home, I mean, that's their job, but.
But the reality is a lot of them are are so burnt out by the time we come home.
Yeah.
From working six jobs and backflipping.
Yeah, yeah.
It it gets hard.
Yeah.
I I do after school now and we do homework assistance. And the number one upset I get from parents is if a child come home without the homework done. Number one, like.
Cause one last thing that they have to do. Wow.
That's their top priority.
So they don't even review, I mean, even if the homework's done, they should at least review it.
But that's easy time, right? Like, I know my child did it with an adult, it fixed, right?
Okay.
That's easy. It's not so easy for me to try to get you to read this sentence when I done tired or I'm trying to cook dinner and you read it. So I frustrated and I don't wanna have to deal with it and I just don't wanna deal with it then.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's part of the reality, but if I know I have opportunities within the year, not selective. Weeks, week of the young child, this is your only week you get to come into. Like, honestly, I know this is a part of the culture, this is a part of the educational culture, and this is where I think the board can support the department. We could provide these opportunities and these venues for parents to be able to have this, like.
Yeah.
Have these discussions with each other.
Let me ask you another question. What about teachers' pay? We all, we all, we all know they're a little lagging here. Um, I mean, would you be able to help? We, I know, I know there's, there's some talk about pass raises and.
That's all A F T.
Okay.
And as a former member of American Federation of Teachers, I know firsthand how much it is a challenge.
Okay.
To get the administration to talk money.
Okay.
We will talk everything and I need this on, oh, they need to be more certified, we need to have them in class more. Let's start extending the school day. No, let's split the school day. No. We're willing to have all that discussion, but the challenge that they have is having a discussion about pay.
Yeah.
And so, like I said, that's a, that's a A F T thing.
Okay.
That's not a board issue. But again, how can we support you by giving you the data that shows ninety nine point nine percent of our teacher population are highly qualified for this? They are master degree, doctorates, BAs with five hundred different certifications attached to their bachelor's. Like, we could help you with your fight from that angle.
Okay.
Being able to utilize the information that we have to help support your argument on why you should be paid more.
Be paid more, okay.
But we are definitely not at the table as a board to tell.
Do you, do you have any info on, um, like, how many teachers were short, that kind of stuff? I mean, you have any general numbers?
Uh, no, I don't have any general numbers because the numbers are always staggering, right?
Okay.
I, right now, they're probably using the numbers that started after school year, but after the hurricane, we know we lost.
Yeah, we lost a lot of people.
We lost people.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've ever revamped those numbers, because when I go on the website, just like you. Information is not up to date.
Okay.
Information is not valid information.
Okay.
And when I try to get to the table, just like you. The meetings aren't open to you right now.
Yeah.
This is not your time. I am you. Right about now in this position, I am you.
I got you.
What I'm trying to do is bring you to the table with me. And that's, that's, that's my goal of being on the board, being able to be a little more open, be a little more accessible.
Okay.
People that you are supporting, the people that you are supposedly.
Yeah.
Governing.
So will you be able to, will you be able to, and this all falls in, falls into the whole thing of accountability, but would you be able to, if you get in, would you be able to like? Once a week, get on the radio and give updates? Because, you know, like.
If you would have me, I'm here, David. I am here, yes, yes. And anybody else that would have me.
Yeah.
It's. Some information is public knowledge, right? The government has their own TV station and stuff where I'm sure you could make sense, make appointments to be able to get on. And I would love to be able to have that platform every week. You know, I applaud people like Chucky Hampton and stuff who are actively always on the radio station connecting with. People.
People, yeah.
Good, bad and different, always available.
Yeah.
I know. And Saturday, if I need to talk to Chucky, where I can find her.
Yeah.
Right? I know exactly the number I could call. I may not find on Monday through Friday, but I know for sure.
Saturday morning, I know.
Saturday morning, where she's going to be. And yes, that is part of what I want to be, whether it's co-hosting.
Okay.
Or just being invited up, or some people have open door policies. I'm going to use those open doors.
I got you.
Have these discussions.
Okay.
But it's always going to be coming from a framework of what's happening. And what do you suggest we do as we continue?
Okay.
Right? So it's, it's my opportunity to stay connected. The same thing I'm planning to do with, with teens. The teen work I do at the club, it's called Lit, right? It's called.
L I T?
L I T. It's called leaders in training. It's a twist on words because all the kids today are lit. If you ask anybody, I'm lit. I called it lit, but it's leaders in training and and we sat down and we did social campaigns and. One of these kids did this one on her campaign and she says, every voice matters. And I thought it was such a, because, you know, black lives matter. Every life matter, but every voice matters is something that that we. It became like a part of what I wanted to keep. Because she's so right. If we can't hear your voice, it doesn't matter. So we have to give these people and places opportunities to hear the voice. And that's what me being on the radio would be like. Me being on the radio is my opportunity to hear the voice. So that I could go back and be making informed decisions that I know the masses can be impacted by. Not one or two in my special dinner meetings that I have on my elite centers that I go to. I want to be able to tap in and stay connected to the people's voice that matter in education. Children, the teachers, the parents, the department, the legislature, the administration. All of these voices matter in collectively making a sustainable education system.
Let me, let me ask you about um, the Common Core. You know what that is? How do you feel about that? You for it, against it?
I am for Common Core. I am, I am, I am. I believe in the accountability. I believe in in, like I said, it being able to utilize the data. And most importantly, the part of our common core that I love is that each district, each area. You have that governing policy by the U S Department, but it's not telling you how to do it. Right? Like, so the same thing I'm saying in the classrooms where I think needs a little more policy. I love that the United States. Department of Education's funding doesn't come with that much policy. Every child should know this by third grade. Any child should know this by fourth grade. Every child should know this. Now however way you want to ensure that your children know this. Is getting that. So we're a bit to put where our geographic location is in our textbooks, right? Like Common Core gave us that ability versus. Nickelby that was, you go teach them this, you go, you know, Nickelby, no child left behind. Right, right? So. Those laws was telling you exactly what you're going to teach. And for me, that was offensive because I don't see why I have to teach my children about the snow cycle. Or the impact of this more than teaching them about sand and erosion, right? Or or using terms and words. How many potatoes in the Midwest? That's not what we growing, but we could definitely use that sugar cane. Right? As as a point of reference for our children. So I I do like Common Core. I think that we're not utilizing it enough with the freedom that we have, just adapting.
Is it, is it, is it in part in place here or?
Of course, we get U S funding, it's better be in place. I think what we did as a department, and I'm not exactly sure, so don't quote me on this. But we adapted different policies from different states, right? Like so. Your aspect of what you're doing for Common Core, we're gonna utilize it here in the Virgin Islands because it's working in Florida, so it's gonna work here. We are not Florida. We didn't take into accommodations all of the outside varieties that impact us that may not impact. The state of Florida. I think we should have did a little more time sussing through. Exactly what it is we adopting. Don't just adopt it because it's workable there. Adopt it. And I'm not saying recreate the wheel, but definitely shift through it a little bit and see how we could. Purposely put it into our children.
Is there, is there a committee that this is, this is there, uh, under the board or even under?
Not under the board.
Education. So there is a committee that.
We have directors for every subject area. Like our department is built up with, we have people in place to do the walk. I don't know how much of the work they're being able to do, but their title entails them to do that walk, right? So I'm not sure, because like I said, the end, you still have to answer to the top. And if that's not their vision, that's not.
So one of the things that uh, people always say, and I see it myself, that um. Department of Education has a huge budget, the biggest budget. And some people say that it it it's, it's, it's probably a bit much. And I think some years back, I looked at a, I worked, I looked at a, like a, like a, like a job title org chart. And there was a lot of things there. I looked at it, you know, all these, all these things needed. So have you seen that or what?
I I I have seen it and and. You know, my, my thoughts on top of that is is wishy washy, right? Because from one aspect. I could definitely see why the position is created, right? Like I could see where it can make a change. I just don't think that we give enough. Props, so to speak. We don't give enough props to all the other resources we had in place already that was that. Right? Like you just created this position to do whatever. And we already had four people doing that same walk. Right? They don't have that title. So the the name is not there, but the work is already being done. So either we remodel our resources and don't have these people doing the walk anymore and the walk is now yours and you get it done. Or we just have people up there that's for fluff. Like you have a title, but you're not really doing anything because we're still utilizing the same four people doing the walk.
Yeah, I got you.
How? Like, like, is that the best use of our resources? I know, I'm not sure exactly what the budget is for the Department of Education. Some people say it's grand. I've heard people say. It's not like for the amount of work and the amount of things that we have to serve, we're the one depart where. Tell you educator for life. Department of Education is the one department that touches every other department. Right? Like so every other department has to have some form of education to help keep that department alive. We should have people in human services addressing concerns under the department. Like use some of their resources to educate. Use some of agriculture's department to fa- to fund our programs that we're doing. Use some of WAPA even.
Yeah. So those, those kind of things aren't happening?
Not that I know. Not that I know. If it is happening, I would love to see how it's happening. I would love to see how these connections are being made. I know from being in special education at human services or when we're addressing the child, children with special needs. Human services is always at the table because they're responsible for your, your living conditions, right? So and a lot of people. That have children with special needs cannot necessarily financially pay into all of the things needed to keep this child alive. Respirators, wheelchairs, you know, like tubing, all of that stuff. Human services supplements. Our students in those matters because it's a part of them being able to get a education. And I would love to see it on other departments and other angles, right? Like so children with disabilities fall under different laws. But children without disabilities need those supports too, right? Like. Our agriculture program that we have in the schools should be supported by our Department of Agriculture. Like our agriculture teachers should be able to have resources directed to them from the Department of Agriculture. Because it's a one hand, like at the end, we producing your future, right? The future people who loves agriculture. So why are you not investing inside of it? Instead, our resources are being scattered. So to speak, like we think, we feel like we throwing seeds and hoping to see what blooms.
Yeah, we get it. Hopefully we get a nice, a nice sour sap. What else I got for you? So that, that, so we talked a little bit about the, the, the size and the budget. Because my, in my mind, you know, if we could eliminate some positions, and I, I don't remember the, the actual org chart, but if we could eliminate some positions. I mean, this is money that could be used for other things.
I agree.
You know, maybe it could be used definitely, you know, for pr- for teacher raises. They eliminated, you know, six, seven positions.
But eliminating the position does not eliminate the work. So before we start eliminating positions, we have to redefine our framework.
But are people actually? Are people actually like working eight hours on this stuff? Because you know, there's, there, there, there is some, there is some. There is some um, food, food for thought that. Although you were, although you're, 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 you're in an office eight hours a day. That you're only, you're only probably doing five or six hours of work. So there's a, there's a thing there of two hours, you're probably just goofing off. You're at work surfing Facebook, you're talking to your ex-boyfriend, whatever you're doing. So that, that's why I say that.
How can we make it more resourceful, like sustainable with what we have?
Because you know, the Virgin Islands is in a crunch for money. I mean, so.
All over the world, like all over the United States is in a crunch for money right now. And this is why I think more now, more than ever. We have to start redefining our framework. We have to start looking at our framework and saying. So it worked before and we was in high crop season, so we could have afforded to do this. But right now, we're gonna cut a position because we can't afford to keep it, but nobody's remembering that the work still has to be done because under Common Core. That has to be done. Right? So your funding source, because our general budget, as much as people want to talk about Department of Education, big budget, it's not coming from your general fund. Right? Like general fund could barely hold up our educators, much less to hold up our buildings and all of the.
Grant money and stuff that comes down that.
This is federal monies, this is grant monies, this is people signing and writing all type of programs to be able to get it done. These people are working. Just to keep the financial.
Yeah, money coming in.
So what we're calling laxie daisy, a lot of times is because they're not being able to channel the energy to actually do their work. Because they're still trying to secure funds to be able to do that work. Right? So I do want to be able to implement this on every grade level. But we gotta find a funding source to get the resources to be able to do that. And so now all of us are at the table, gather the money, get the data, get it together. And by the time the money comes trickling down, one or two things is what I see happening. One, the money comes after the project, right? Because it's not right now. And two, and we needed it now. And two, by the time the money comes, the people end on gone. Nobody is shared a vision. You know, like this was me and David's work, but me and David gone now, so.
Just falls by the wayside.
Nobody's implementing it. So that's what happens to the money. Back to America. We never used it.
Yeah, you hear a lot of that too.
That all the time, yes, yes. And and the effect is.
Which I never, which I never quite understood why or how. I mean, you know, they give you money for a project, you know. Just do the project.
It sounds that easy in private sector, but in public sector, you have to go through procurement, come down, we added the stuff. Now we gotta secure deposits to do it. Now we gotta give back the money. And even though we have the money in place in, in the borough. All of the lines that we have to fill out to get there and then all of the lines that we have to sign to come back down. We missed the deadline or we're not able to implement it with true earnestness.
Is, is, is the Department of Education sending a lot of money back? Do you know? I mean.
From what I read, just like you read in the newspaper, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm reading.
That's what I'm reading.
I get a check and you just put another envelope and just send it right back. We ran out of time, so we gotta return the money.
We gotta return the money. And those are the things that we have to learn because there's people who could come in and help this out. Like there are private sectors that. You secure the funds and they could implement the program for you. You know, I'm, I'm in nonprofit, so. I'm always waving like, hello, we'll do it, we'll, we'll do it.
Send some this way and I'll take care of it.
Because there's no place in, in the law that says the children have to be educated in the building by the teachers in the building. They're saying this program has to be implemented to Virgin Islands children in the public school system. Public school children are all over. Muggs Center have public school children. Caribbean Center for Boys and Girls have public school children. There's a lot of them, weed and seed. There's ways that we could do. We just have to come to the table and start to think outside of that crazy box. That worked in nineteen sixty, right? Like, like that box was not crazy in nineteen sixty, but it seems a little. Worn out now in twenty eighteen. And so let's step out of it and see what other ways we could do things because that's important. Short resources and everybody still have to be served. You better find a better way to serve them. Because the way we doing it is not feasible, right? Like, and how long would America going broke? They gonna keep sending us checks to send back.
I know, I know, I know. That's a little scary there too.
That's the real. So we gotta start thinking real. We gotta start putting ourselves in places that we are sustaining each other. We are supporting each other. This fight against who writes or who ran. We gotta kill it. That cul- that part of our culture helped us during that period. We're moving into a new era. And in this era, our resources have to be stretched far. With little bits. The only way to do it is by supporting each other, partnering.
And then, and the ultimate objective here is to teach the youth.
How important that is.
Yeah, from K three on up.
And get them in the walk. They love the work. The children love doing the work, you know, that's what excite me. This is why I do what I do. Because I get a chance to see that light bulb go off. I get a chance to see them, wow, this is so much work, but when they reached the end, like we did that. That was us, that was. It, it gives a whole different buy into your society, engagement in the children. Of understanding their society and the way that they are and knowing that I am not just a place in society. I am a pauson in this society. My voice matters, the walk that I do matter, the people that I impact matter, and I am accountable to these people. Right now, I got a lot of my babies don't feel accountable to nobody, like, and it's, it's crazy. But it's because we marginalized them. We as Virgin Islanders put children in a place. I grew up in a place. You know, like, you know, much times people tell me it's the other big people business. You know, much times people tell me like, you're old enough for that. Maybe when you get bigger, you could do that.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
Can't walk anymore. It can't walk. It was great for keeping you in mannered, like. But we don't need manners as much as we need thinkers. And doers, you know, like we need them right now.
Implementers, yeah. Let's, let's get this thing.
We execute, really. That's me. I'm a executor. I, I believe in executing. If something come through this mind, ain't done till it. It's transcended into the physical.
Your vision of what you were hoping it to be.
Into the physical and it, and it changes. Don't worry. That's the good thing. Like my vision to start off in my mind one way, but when it unfolds. It's like, God, I'm so happy Jia love me more than I love me. Because Jia will send me. A mind like David to show me, Manuela, you could take the hundred dollars and flip it eight times if you do this and. Versus me who was going to flip my hundred dollars twice. And I was happy with it. Like in my mind, I was happy with this. But David came with a different vision or a different angle to my vision and I was receptive to hearing it. That's important in leadership, especially as we move forward.
So you, you, you see yourself as a leader?
I am.
Why you say that?
I'm a leader because I'm a doer and I get people engaged in what I'm doing. And then when we're doing it, it becomes all our work. And that's what leadership is about. It's not just a title. It's about getting somebody else and others to buy into a whole mission. And accomplishing that mission. That's leadership for me. It's not about me standing up and saying I'm going to do this and then I doing it and then I. I don't feel like a leader when it's only me because who are leading? Like, you know, that kind of way, like, who's there? Who's who brought into this vision with me? That's leadership. And I have a gift for that. And it comes with, with my diplomatic. Abilities not to hold on, to understand that the whole is what matters. That's, that's, that's my gift. I'm ready to share it with my Virgin Islands people.
And and you've had some past, because I know when you came on the show in the past, you were talking about, you're still involved with.
The N F conference, yes. We didn't um, do it this year because the hurricane. Remember, this is in October. But we did it last year in St. Croix and St. Thomas. And my vision this year, we was, and we brought St. Johnians over to St. Thomas for the program. And we was about to do it again this year on the same level, but just even better. Because it's important work for me. You know, I still believe in getting our children aware in relationships and understanding that. Our relationship is positive or negative based on you, right? Like, like take ownership of how you react and spend time with people. Take ownership of how you associate yourself and brand yourself with my young people. So you better believe I'm still doing that work.
All right, our guest tonight, it is uh, actually nine twenty nine. Time has flown.
This was so.
But guess what? We were having fun.
Fun with you. And and not just you, but my caller that came in. I'm looking forward to go online and check out what they had to say. And and I really want my people to know, I believe in a resilient board.
Yeah, just uh, give us the closing.
Yes, I believe in a resilient board and I believe that the more widespread attention. That is given to the Board of Education is the better our education system is going to be. Emmanuela Perez is coming to transform our educational system with a global vision. Building bridges, not walls, vote for number three in the Democratic primary and on to the general election.
All right, man. Well done. We like you at the It's Your Perspective Talk Show, man.
I love you too. And I love my Virgin Islanders because I am you and you are me, like Ubuntu.
We're all one, basically. Yeah, we're all one.
Yes, I am because you are. And it's important for us to notice, like if nothing else you take from me tonight. Take our connection real, like take our connection with each other and the collective work that we have to do as a real thing.
Yes. All right, our guest tonight is Emmanuela Perez. Cassius, thank you for that. Uh, she is running for a seat on the uh, Board of Elections. Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Board of Education, it says that right there. Uh, coming up here uh, in August. August fourth.
Yes, is the primary next time.
And then the general is in Sep- November, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, November. And she's hoping to get in because she, she uh, feels that she can make it, make a difference. And make a change and make it better, make it stronger, make it more positive so that for our youth. Her young kids and and uh, and just a lot of other people have young kids. Uh, coming up will just get a good education and more importantly, they know about who they are in the, in the perspective of the Virgin Islands.
That's right. It's your perspective is actually what I want them to understand.
That's how it goes, man. So on that note, I want to say thank you to our guests. Uh, she is always welcome here.
Having me. This has been a great sense of energy. And even though it's nine thirty at night, I feel like this party just got started.
It's got started, right? Well, that is great, man. So we want to thank our guests for coming in tonight. And I just want to say real quick that this is the It's Your Perspective Talk Show. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight P M until. We're on Facebook Live. Go to the It's Your Perspective Talk Show. Uh, Facebook page, you'll be able to see the stream here just for another few minutes. But on Tuesday, we have more guests lined up. So you pop in there on Tuesday and you uh, you'll be able to see who we got.
Stay connected.
Stay connected, man. Uh, more, more candidates. Soup and I are just, we just, we're all booked up through the end of June and into the first part of July. With candidates, want to thank the guys that came on already. And we want to thank the guys that will hopefully make it here on their perspective day. Uh, they're just sharing their platform. We just heard another platform, more, more, more fine tuned to just education. But education is important.
It's the basis, it's the foundation.
It's real important.
Everybody's careers.
We, we gotta have it. Um, she, she got educated here. I got educated here. You know, we, we just, uh, you know, we're proud and, and. And we want to just kind of make sure that the young ones coming up can get the same thing.
And be, be successful in the world like we are.
That's how it goes.
That's what it's about.
Thank you so much. On that note, we're out. You guys have a great weekend. We'll see you next week.